Was to those people. Seems like common sense approach.
What happens is the new neighbors, they come in and they they start walking trails anyways, which I'm fine with. I don't know how the neighbors feel. I don't think it would be ever a place where there'd be a parking lot for people to park and walk in. I don't think it's that big.
The way the open space is set up, there's no way to cross.
Okay. But I wouldn't wanna.
Large parcels.
I wouldn't want to restrict them being able to walk on the land.
They are.
Right.
But left in its natural state as much as possible besides low impact walking trails. What do you think, Dale?
I think that's I think that's a good idea.
The only challenge would be is you have to go through private property to get into get to the open space.
Oh, well then.
Aside from.
Well, I was thinking more for the people who are gonna buy your lots.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Cause remember there was that couple that they wanted to maintain that little path from their house into the woods and the conservation trust closed it off. So they were not happy. Does the neighbors okay with that level of of protection kept in its natural state except for low impact walking trails?
We don't want anybody walking through there.
No.
Okay. So so just kept in its natural state.
There'd really be no reason for.
No.
Okay.
What about the turkeys?
What about the turkeys?
No turkeys.
No turkeys?
That's where they used to stay. There's a lot of turkeys.
That's fine. I'm fine with leaving it in its natural state. Okay. Glad you came tonight.
Great. Then the other thing I was hoping to.
Oh, Linda's got the.
Hi, Lynn Barbie. I live on Surf Drive. I live in a cluster development and our homeowners association controls our open space. But none of us are conservationists. We don't, you know, we're lucky to have somebody who lives there who's an arborist because he makes sure if a tree's coming down that it's, you know, not gonna damage anybody's property. So I think having the nature land conservancy be in charge of it makes more sense because they are conservationists. They understand how to maintain something. And just the residents in those houses will benefit from that knowledge as opposed to having to figure out how they're gonna take care of it because it's it's a it's a good chunk of land and you want to make sure that, you know, it's well maintained. And I think the nature land conservancy, I know of them and I've met some of them and I respect them a lot. I think that's really a very appropriate conservation organization.
Okay. And the and the remember the remember I had all those questions about the storm water flow, right? That depression where it's going, is that on in the open space?
Yes.
Okay. So just make sure that they know about that, right? That.
They do.
It's called out on the plan that they have.
Yeah.
Cause I don't want them to come back and say, oh, you can't do that anymore cause that will just mess everything up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that's another good question for the applicant. Who's going to continue to be responsible for the operation and the maintenance of the stormwater management?
HOA.
The HOA will be. Okay.
So we have to make sure that's in some type of legally binding document? And that.
I think it's in the draft deed, Brian, isn't it?
That building that was gonna get knocked down? Okay, good.
I have a I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dale.
Is this site a archaeologically sensitive?
It's it's been it's been investigated by PAL and everything came back negative. I think that was part of the subdivision approval, prior to the subdivision approval. Yeah.
Okay.
What else, Brian? Do you need direction from us?
So the third thing I was hoping to accomplish this evening again, just so we can feel like we made some poor progress before seeing if the applicant is amenable to a continuance is doing a consensus vote on the requested waivers. Now, I went over the waivers that they requested and candidly, I just don't even think that those provisions are applicable. I don't I don't even think a waiver request is applicable because I don't think waivers are necessary in this particular scenario. There were some supplemental materials that ordinarily, if it were an original special permit or potentially if it were a modification to a special permit that were that would implicate these supplemental materials. Like, let's say, for example, one of them's the site plan and you are making a change to where the septic system is. Well, then obviously, we would want you to submit a revised site plan. But none of the things in in the in the sections that the applicant is requesting a waiver on are applicable to the changing of the wording of a special permit when that wording is uniquely tailored to just the ownership entity of open space land. So my reading of the of the code in this particular case is that waivers aren't even necessary because it's just flat out not applicable. But I did wanted to defer to the past experience of the board in the event that sometime in the past, a modification was like this like this was made and they did require all of the application materials to be submitted. To me, it flies against common sense, but I just wanted to.
I don't think we've ever seen anything like this, have we? Yeah. Okay. So what I would say is, I think, I mean, I'm amenable to any waivers that are necessary to get this piece done. So I.
May I address that? So in an application for a special permit, there's a number of different things that have to be filed with the application. Your bylaws are silent as to what needs to be what needs to accompany an application for modification of a special permit. I agree with Brian. I don't think a lot of the things were required to be filed because they're not relevant. But there's but the bylaws are silent as to what needs to be filed with the application for a modification of a special permit. So rather than leave that question in the air, if you feel that they need to be waived, I want them waived. But if if they're not relevant, then that's fine as well.
Okay, so our our town planner is saying there.
No, no.
There's no need for it. I'm I'm sure if during the time period between now and our next meeting, something comes up.
Well, yeah, and I.
Just address it. But if you don't have to waive something, I'd rather not.
Yeah, and I think I think it's just important to point out for the minutes and, you know, if anybody's looking back over this in the future is that, you know, they already submitted all of the materials that were that are asked for under our bylaw in the initial application. The only thing that they're asking for a change on is the legal structure and legal ownership of who's holding the open space. They're not changing anything else in the application.
And it wasn't like the application was twenty years ago.
Completely different story if they were changing something else in the original application, the site plan, anything, right? But that's not what's happening here. It's really just who's gonna hold the open space land.
Right. I mean, typically, we we don't see people coming back so quickly, you know what I mean? It just is a unique situation. So, okay. All right. Anything else, Brian?
No, I would just recommend we ask if the applicant's amenable to a continuance, you know?
Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, if you if you need the time or it sounds like the board needs the additional time to.
Right. We want to get you some draft documents to look at.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Is it okay? Is it okay with the board that the town planner, the applicant and town council work together on this?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Good.
And how much time do you think we need, Brian?
Well, I mean, I think we can shoot for the next meeting.
That's right, because we're not meeting the first Wednesday in October, so it'd be the second Wednesday, which I think is October fifteenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Oh, no, maybe it is the fifteenth. You're right. I think it is the fifteenth. Today's the seventeenth.
I'm looking on my phone for the calendar. Not really having a lot of luck.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And do you know if we have it? What do we have on that meeting agenda?
Um, I mean, we have a few things, but I don't see I don't think this would overburden it.
Nothing timed.
I don't think this would overburden it.
Okay, so accept a motion to continue this public hearing to October fifteenth at six forty.
So be.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
You beat you beat Dennis Stewart. I'm all set. I'm good.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so thank you, everybody, for coming. There's a lot of information in the meeting packet. So including that letter from the Mash from the Cape Cod Compact of Land Trusts. So I'd contact the planning department for all those materials that are in the packet and hopefully we'll see you back here on the fifteenth at six forty.
Need the bathroom.
Okay, we can take a little, yeah. We'll take a little recess.
And Madam Chair, when we come back for the recess, perhaps we could go out of order and take Osprey Court's partial release. I think we should just do a continuance for that as well.
Hi, you can keep that. I have an extra copy. It it was a good letter. Okay, it made me feel better at least.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Thank you for coming.
You know, it occurs to me the conservation commission doesn't want to have responsibility, but we just decided it's gonna stay in its natural state. There really isn't anything to be.
Bye.
To be maintained.
Brian, we'll be talking to you tomorrow about assessor law. Yeah, I don't know. I didn't I didn't I didn't think to get comment from them ahead of time, but I think we've got a plan. I think we have a plan. Oh, my God, I'm so hot.
What's that? How hot?
So I'm going up to New Hampshire, not this weekend, but next, and I I'm just hoping I get some nice weather. There's been such nice weather except for today.
Whereabouts?
White Mountains, you know?
Wait, you went already or you're going?
I'm going, not this weekend, but next. And so I grew up in Brockton, so we always went up to the White Mountains, you know, in the fall.
Whereabouts are you gonna go?
The Flume.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the gorge, like all those touristy places.
You have to like book the Flume now, though.
You have to. Thank you for that heads up.
Yeah. Yeah, go online and book your time. Like, it's actually time travel now.
The mountain.
Yeah.
The month later, that's when it fell down.
Wow.
I have pictures of, you know, my son.
So you went right before?
Yep, right before.
Wow. Wow, I know. I like I can't I can't go to that little rest area anymore because I don't even want to look up and see that he's gone.
In New York, I went up to the building that collapsed, what the Flume went to. Two weeks before the plane crashed, my son, we went to New York. They took him up the World's Trade Center.
Right.
And two weeks later, the plane crashed in there.
Oh.
And I said, it was a lucky thing we went.
I know. I know. Wow. Okay, we're gonna come back into order and we're gonna do Osprey Court partial release. And that is a simple continuance.
Correct.
Oh, okay, good. There's a there's a letter in our packet. I'm fine with continuing it again to October fifteenth. All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. But you'll have you'll have the right number of people. We don't have to. It's just under old business.
All right.
But you know what? On our next agenda, because it's the same representative, why don't we just put them one after another?
I think that's wise.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so project reviews and inspections. There's some stuff in here. Ed couldn't come.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that he had submitted anything. I I did call Ed. I did not hear back from him. I called him today. But, you know, I was at one Cape, so if materials were submitted, Hannah probably put them in there. It does look like. Yeah, he's got he's got a memo on Country Club Estates with some photos. And that's all I'm seeing. So I.
I saw some invoices.
Yeah, there's some invoices we can vote on, but I think that may be a separate that's a separate line item. Yeah. But yeah, no, thank you for mentioning that. We should vote on his invoices.
Okay, here it is. Okay.
But it looks like that's the letter regarding Country Club Estates that we wanted to.
So now there's.
Potentially submit to the select board. Was that the one?
But now there's curbing at that intersection. Yes. So I drove by. Now there's curbing. So it now I don't feel as though you're gonna smash into that rectangular raised hardscape. There's curbing now along. This is the one that's along at the bend of Old Barnstable, right?
Me and you went up there and looked at that.
Yeah. It's it looks much better. I hope at night you can see it, you know, because it's low.
Yeah, they need.
But I I thought I was like, all of a sudden, I was like, oh, the cars are not gonna not gonna hit that sharp corner of Bluestone.
One thing I would like to see is a sign coming from Old Barnstable, from one fifty-one saying entrance or something, you know, tell them there's a before you come around the corner.
Yeah.
Give a warning.
See the curbing?
Yeah.
It looks way better now with the curbing. All right, so you want to see a sign?
Two signs. One, coming from Old Barnstable Road down and coming up just to let them know there's a, you know, entrance and exit coming ahead.
Oh, do you mean like cars entering on the left or something like that?
Yeah, but especially coming off of one fifty-one because that's a you're coming around a corner. And that's some foggy nights. People are gonna be coming out of there and coming down, boom.
Can you pass that comment on to Ed? You know what he's talking about.
I sent it to Ed, but I don't know if he.
Well, why don't why don't I also just read? Perhaps I should read Ed's memorandum.
Yes, okay, go right ahead.
Why don't we do that? Even though I didn't have the chance to discuss it with Ed, I'm just gonna go ahead. So this is a memorandum. Actually, it looks like it's dated August twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five. It's to Madam Chair from Ed Pesci. And its subject is Country Club Estates Intersection Safety Concerns at Old Barnstable Road. As requested, I conducted a follow-up site inspection on Friday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at the Country Club Estates subdivision entrance road, Country Club Lane off Old Barnstable Road, next to the Quashnet Valley Country Club. This inspection was intended to help determine the current conditions for vehicle site distance at this location where the shape of Old Barnstable Road is similar to a widened U. Findings: What I discovered was that the site has extensive obstructions of vegetation on the south side of the intersection. See the attached sketch plan? These obstructions affect multiple vehicle movements at this intersection as follows. One, vehicles exiting Country Club Lane for a vehicle stopped on the eastern exit lane of Country Club Lane. There is not adequate safe site distance to see approaching vehicles driving north from Route one fifty-one on Old Barnstable Road. Two, vehicles approaching Country Club Lane similarly for a vehicle traveling north from Route one fifty-one on Old Barnstable Road and wishing to make a left turn onto Country Club Lane. There is not adequate site safe site distance to see approaching vehicles driving west on Old Barnstable Road. I recommend that the area of the Quashnet Valley Country Club abutting the southern perimeter area of this part of Old Barnstable Road be cleared and or pruned to proved at least a two hundred and fifty foot clear site distance. See the attached sketch plan for this approximate clearing location. Clearing slash pruning of the vegetation in this area will great greatly improve traffic safety at this intersection. And then it references attached photos.
We should give you this. That's what you've been talking about all these years.
Yeah, that's a big one.
So I guess the question is.
Now, Ed can take a joke, so.
Do we want to forward this to the select board or not? Because I believe the pruning is referring to is on private property. Maybe a portion of it is in.
Why?
That's why I was saying put the signs up.
Private property.
I believe so. I mean, there may be a portion of it that because sometimes the towns have.
Right away.
Rights, yeah, on the sides of the ways themselves. And so maybe a portion of the clearing he's referencing would be within that.
Yeah, I I would love to find out who we send this information to.
Okay, I thought that was the original discussion of the board is and why we asked him for the memorandum was we were considering sending something to the select board since it.
That's why I was saying the sign because they think we asked that before. They said the town didn't own it. It was private property, so they couldn't really clear cut it. So that's why I was saying if you put a sign up, maybe a flashing sign when a car's coming down, say entrance to the left, entrance to the right, you know, which way you're coming. If you come from one fifty-one, it'd be entrance to the left or entrance and exit when you're coming far from Great Neck Road south, I mean, north, it would say entrance, you know, to the right. And that way you're not the clear cut.
No.
But it seems to me there's still, I mean, he's asking for some serious pruning. Yeah. Whether it's town land or private land, it still has to be a safety concern. I don't know what the laws are in this, Brian, maybe. I mean, I mean, if there's a tree from somebody's property hanging over Route one fifty-one, you gotta remove it, right? I don't know how how restrictive those those abilities of the town to do it, but listen, I.
I know with private property owners, if a limb's going over your property. And again, as a disclaimer for anybody listening, this is not legal advice and you should consult your own attorney. But you you typically are allowed to trim off off the limbs if they're hanging over. I don't know how it works with roadways and then you get into the whole issue of state versus town on roads, so.
Well, I like what Mike said. It's a safety question.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Who owns the property?
Yes, I think we should forward this.
I think.
To the Board of Selectmen or to whoever has this. This is under their jurisdiction.
Sure.
Do you know what I mean?
Well, it may involve looping in DPW if it is on is is on a portion of the town right away. I believe the reason, though, and this was several planning board meetings ago and I I did not realize that this memorandum had made its way into its packet, otherwise I would have gone back over things. But I I think part of the issue is that some of these trees are on private property. So there's really only so much like the town has its in its authority to do and there may be it may require a request of the landowner if they're amenable to troubleshooting the issue with the town. Because I don't think it's just about trimming branches. I think they're also talking about actually clearing trees.
Yes.
Well, I mean, if if these people are at an intersection where safety is a concern, part of relieving the issue is by clearing some of their foliage and trees or whatever else is there. It seems to make sense, but you may not have to impose a law, but you can impose common sense at least at first and see how that goes.
Agreed.
All right, so is it the consensus of the board that we we instruct the town planner to pass this along to the select board or whatever entity has jurisdiction over this?
The DPW.
Yeah, I just don't want to say only the select board in case it just it goes to the DPW. Do you know what I mean, Brian? That's all.
Yep.
So is that good with everybody that you pass it along?
Sounds good.
All right. And what what who would be responsible to put up little signs? Would that be DPW?
Yeah, that would be.
So if you could pass on to DPW Dennis's idea about, you know, upcoming intersection, cars entering on the left, cars entering on the right, it's very, it, you know.
Yeah, but those I thought those entering and exit signs, I thought the developer had agreed to do something to that effect.
I thought it's because when I asked, I didn't know what that.
That's Masters, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. He was we had a meeting with him and.
Because I said that would be cheaper than cutting all the trees down.
Yeah, again, this was several months ago, but we had a meeting with him and he was amenable to putting up, you know, right turn, left turn signs and, you know, effectively an entrance and an exit sign. And we even had spot locations, but that was a separate issue from the clear cutting in the in the line of sight. So I'm I am a little surprised the memo doesn't have both of those issues in there. But he and it may be because where we landed with things is that the developer said he would take care of that. Because he's still building way in the back there.
Oh, yeah.
So you want to check with Kenny Marsters?
Sure.
About the signs?
Sure.
You'll forward it to the select board, not the Board of Selectmen, Mary.
Lately, I've been like switching back and forth at the Montevideo.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yep.
All right, so we've got four invoices. Invoice two oh two five dash two three two oh for five hundred forty-six dollars and forty-four cents for work at Osprey Court. I'll take a motion to approve.
So be it.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Invoice number two zero two five dash two three two one for five thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents for Island Pickleball inspections, et cetera. I'd accept a motion to approve.
So be.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoice number twenty twenty-five twenty-three twenty-two for two thousand seven hundred two dollars sixty-six cents for work at Country Club Estates Construction Inspection Services. Take a motion to accept to pay.
So be.
To approve and pay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And invoice number twenty twenty-five twenty-three twenty-three for nine hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty cents for work at four seventy-four Main Street and at thirty-one Assurement Road. Construction Inspection Services, I'd take a motion to approve and pay.
So be.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On that one, I'm gonna abstain. Okay, so we have people in the audience. Oh, here we go. Aquay Highlands Tripartite Agreement. I'm just gonna hand these to the recording secretary. Come on up. That's for your minutes. Okay, so I'm gonna start with Brian on this. Is that okay?
Sure enough.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Where are we on this, Brian?
Well, so brief recap. The only thing that historically has been holding up the release of this tripartite agreement is whether or not swells on the corner of Carriage Road.
Road.
Carriage Road.
And DeGrasse.
And DeGrasse were vegetated on the bottom. That was a vote that predated, I mean, it dates back to, I believe, I think the initial vote was in like June or July of twenty twenty-four, so it predated my start time here with the planning board. It was the one singular issue of the release of the tripartite agreement. That was outstanding and we've met several times kind of waiting and and looking for the.
Isn't this the area where they had said that the grass was coming in better?
Oh, wait, so we're gonna we're gonna we're gonna go to Dennis next.
Okay, Dennis.
What do you think, Dennis?
All right, I went up there yesterday and the grass is growing fine. It looks good. And he actually getting rid of the pounds of dirt. They were doing it. I went up there at seven o'clock last night and the truck was still loading up. The backhoe was still loading the truck, getting away with the dirt. I hope you keep that going to get rid of all that dirt. But for for me, I think we should sign off on this. I mean, the grass.
I'll let you make the motion.
I make a motion. What do I say? Sign off on?
Yeah, execute the tripartite agreement release.
Just what Barry said.
So be. So be.
Okay, there's a second. Anything you'd like to add, Brian?
Second, well, if you have to. Go ahead, Brian.
No.
And that's all we need to do and then sign it?
Yeah, well, we need a notary here. Otherwise, you all have to come back to the clerk's office to put your signature.
Do you have a stamp? So we can we can sign it in front of you.
They can sign it in front, yeah. That's more than okay.
And we just sign it in front of Chrissy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Congratulations. I'm glad to hear that came through.
Thought you were talking to me, Brian.
Congratulations. I'm gonna wait till it's signed because you never know.
So I don't think you need to say a word.
Everything could go south right before the last signature.
You don't even need to say a word. So any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yay. Okay.
Congratulations.
So Chrissy needs to come over and witness us signatures.
Now, there there was one comment I'll make on the separate issue that doesn't have to do with the vote but is with that lot is that dirt has been getting moved and it looks like the the equipment obviously will get moved after the dirt's get.
Bye. Thank you for getting that.
No.
I'm doing it voluntarily. That's the trick door, Jack. We don't want you to leave. You have to go out the next one. Hit it real hard. Good job, Dennis, because I did go by there and it is grass now. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna skip under new business. We're gonna go to the town meeting warrant. Discussion on Article Four. So I brought this I brought the preservation of Zero Gunners Lane up to this board a while back. I had been invited to an operational meeting on it and we had a lively discussion. Every meeting I go to on this, there's a lively discussion. So Mike wanted to to discuss it some more and I thought the way to kind of bring it back to us was via the warrant, the town meeting warrant, which has been executed and is posted. So if there's anything else in the warrant, we can discuss, but Article Four is an override for twenty-five million nine hundred thousand dollars for the construction of a wastewater. For um the construction uh of a wastewater treatment facility at Zero Gunter's Lane.
Well, um for me, I mean, when we first started the discussion at Gunter's Lane, it was, everybody was extraordinarily sympathetic, but I think we didn't quite have as much information. As we might have liked to and we're all maybe a little bit guilty of that because that's part of our job, but as far back as. Tom Fedala in in twenty twenty two, he was advocating a a location of a plant for this reason, the phosphorus inflection.
Not Tom Fedala.
Tom Fedala.
Don't quote Tom Fedala because it's not what he said. So unless you talk to him and he's willing to make a public statement, I just I just go past that.
I I ju- I just got something about him and it was at a town meeting.
No, it wasn't a town meeting.
Okay, well, it was an hearing.
Interview for him to be on the on the sewer commission.
Alright, so then let me re- let me retract.
Let Tom speak for himself.
Okay, fine. Uh but I will say that we had, we didn't have the information that the sewer commission had heard this, that the select board had heard about this, that the conservation commission had heard about this. And, you know, they admitted, I don't know if anybody saw, I brought it, that Rodney wrote an article or a letter to the Mashpee Enterprise explaining once again the uh. His side of the issue and the day after our meeting, I thought they were very good and clarified a lot of the issues. It's limited use of five acres, five to seven acres. The money is important. They get three percent from from state funding, no interest loans. The cost, and I've been doing my homework on this, is about fifty four dollars a person to get this per year to get this done. And uh the, when I talked to Ashley Fisher, who's, what did you call her?
Well, I call her Miss Mashpee, but that's because she's all things Mashpee.
Very forceful with me in saying that Mashpee's water treatment uh experiences have been as poor as any town on the Cape. That was where, I don't want to quote her exactly, but pretty close. And that that the phosphorus issue and the toxicity that it brings to Wakeby Pond would make it problematic in the not too distant future. Not only that, if they are able to use this facility uh in an area where it's capable of being used, it might be a. An example for other other areas to to sort of piggyback off of this because there's so many issues in Ocoy Bay and other areas. But it seemed to me that proactivity in this regard was, it was so, I was sold on it. I mean, I I was I was sold on it. I'm sympathetic to people that want to keep their pristine areas, but we also didn't realize that much of this was gonna be below ground. And I think they're, they made some concessions. They conceded that they didn't inform people as maybe as well as they should have. I think they changed the access point. To uh to get into the area where they're gonna have to do some construction.
That's a big change.
That, yeah, that is a big change. And you know what? Santuit Pond has some problems and I was talking to some people about this. Their their real estate values are not what they should be. Because of the the water problems that they're having. And we all want open spaces and but we all, we know the clean water thing here on the Cape is a critical issue. So, you know, sometimes you can't have your cake and eat it too, but I I I think I I came far around to the other position after. Doing some homework and listening to some people and, you know, it's a sensitive issue. I get it, but and it obviously pushes some hot buttons, but. I think it seems like a good project. I know there's some obstacles to, Dennis brought some up earlier about, you know, medicines in the pond and that sort of thing, but I. I can't answer those questions, but from what I know of, it seems like it's a project that I can get behind. So thank you, Mary, for letting me.
You're welcome. So there are additional information sessions about this. They're gonna be ha- held at Mashpee Town Hall on September twenty fifth, October second. And October sixteenth at seven P M. So if you'd like to learn more, those are being um branded as community workshops on it. Um I do have to say, Michael, the more that I research this, the more I'm concerned. It my my research is not pulling me towards a a yes on this.
And why is that?
And I'm I'm showing you right now.
Okay.
I'm showing you right now and so um the reason why I brought this.
Hey, one more.
I'm sorry, one more. The reason why I brought this um to the planning board was because it was open space created by um the planning board. Um it was, I I thought at first it was uh a Z B A project a hundred percent, but actually it was. It was some type of strange vote where the Z B A issued part of the decision and the planning board issued part of the decision. If you see, if you look. In the upper right, I'm looking at um Barnstable County Registry Plan Book four four eight, page four. In the top right signature block, those are Mashpee Planning Board signatures up here. Those are Mashpee Planning Board signatures. So my and I and and.
This is what year?
Nineteen eighty seven.
Yeah.
So so this is kind of like a typical division, subdivision that a planning board would, you know, approve. Um so in all my years sitting on a special permit granting authority, I've never known um a a division, a subdivision. That was created or somehow appro- in the approval process was the planning board where if you wanted to change it. With ways, et cetera, like that, or change in uses, that it didn't come back to that special po- a special permit granting authority. So that's my that's my concern because clearly on that plan it says open space. So that's why I brought.
So you're saying it should come back to.
It may.
The zoning board or the planning board?
It it's gonna ha- well, it it may come back to the special permit granting authority. The entity that created these lines on this land might have to be changed, so so, you know. The the quote unquote legal opinion that was made public um was a title search. Um and not a legal opinion about how to do that. So stay tuned. It it might be in front of us. It might not.
But but that that's a very valid point that you make that it may have to come back for approval, but that doesn't speak to the efficacy of the whole project.
Absolutely. If it, yeah, I think it does.
I and why? I mean, that's that's a legal matter, not a matter of of what this does for the residents and for the pond itself and for. The future of clean water. It maybe the approval process has to be revisited. That I grant you, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the actual. The effect of this project seems to me to make sense, but if we disagree, we disagree, but I just.
Well, what's our what's our jurisdiction?
Over, that's a good question.
Right?
Ever come to, I know if it ever came to the planning board before. I'm only several months into this.
We we might have been offered public comment on the two thousand fifteen nitrogen management plan, but we weren't the ultimate approvers of that. Right? But we were the ultimate approver. We're somehow in that process on this land. So um it it might come back to us. I can't, I am not a land use attorney.
But 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 Mary, that that still doesn't address my question, like what's your problem with this project aside from the.
I've I've already, I've I've said that in public, but not as the chair of the planning board. And because that nitrogen plan really isn't under our jurisdiction, I'm not, you know what I mean? Like I I don't, you know.
The nitrogen plan, no, but this is this is more a concern of the phosphorus in the area. So whether it's nitrogen, we all saw the maps that were given that day. It's a.
Right, so.
No problem with nitrogen, but now phosphorus is coming into play and I'm speaking to somebody that says.
Plan, if you want to call it, the phosphorus plan, if you want, same thing. I've already spoken publicly on it.
But but can you enlighten me then, just in a short?
Not while I'm sitting in this chair.
Oh, okay. Again, another legal problem. Like, can you, we'll talk at another time.
It's like, I think we might, you know what I mean? I think the board might end up being involved in one of these phases of decisions.
I don't know. I just know that as I look at this, not knowing your opinion on it and having done some research and asking people working in the town and. And know something about it and having gone to that meeting the day after our meeting, there was a a sea change in my opinion about it. I'll leave that at that.
Alright, my opinion is um in between. I mean, I know it's important to clean up the waterways in our town. I don't know if we're gonna get a bang out of a buck for two hundred forty houses. That most of the time when I went to that meeting, they talked about nitrogen and then phosphate was brought in afterwards, so I don't know how much phosphate they're gonna take out of this plant. And my other concern is sandwich is contributing a lot to the pollution of Mashpee Wakeby. And we haven't, we talked to them once about, you know, tying into this or building somewhere else, a bigger plant to take care of that. Another thing is, when you have these plants, you need so much fluid going into them so they work properly. They're putting two hundred forty houses. How many of those houses are just summer homes? So that means that if they're summer homes, there's not gonna be flushing the toilets to contribute to this system. So is the system gonna work? But.
I I think if for twenty five million dollars the people are setting this in motion, should have the answers to that.
Yeah, they haven't gave me that, you know. But that's another thing. And the thing that really bothers me, even if they treat it, it's still gonna go into the pond. We need a better system of getting rid of the fluid, like even with the new plant. They should put an outfall pipe really to take all this out, because all this looks to me as like a upgraded Title V system. Because how mu- how, what are they gonna do, five pots for a million? But they haven't given me an answer on that, but they're still pumping all that into the Mashpee Wakeby and that goes into the Mashpee River that goes into Poppiness Bay. And so it just seems like we're gonna.
Where's it going now? I mean, we don't have anything to to clean up any part of it. It's still a problem. That's why they're presenting it, but anyway.
Yeah, but I'm.
Crazy question.
Well, let him speak.
Yeah, I will. I have.
I agree with that, but is this really gonna work?
I'm not gonna have a debate. I'm just gonna let him speak.
Okay, good.
Is it gonna really work? Are they guaranteeing we're gonna get most of the phosphate and nitrogen out of this before it goes in the pond? Or is it gonna be like the state recommends ten pot for a million to pass their their thing is that. It just seems like we could spend our money better somewhere else. I'd like to see, take that money. It's really seventeen million because the rest of it is like loans and whatever. But take that and put it into a a fund to help people to tie in where they already have sources and at like a one percent loan. So we have, because a lot of people are gonna have a hard time tying into the system when they put them down the street. It's like thirty, it could be like fifteen thousand to thirty thousand. All depends on where your house is set up. I mean. I we gotta do something and I I need a little more information before I really decide how I I would go about this, but I agree with Mike. It's it's a place we should be really looking into to to clean this up. But I want to guarantee they're gonna really take the phosphate out of that and not just nitrogen, because at that meeting, that was like the second thing, oh, phosphate, but most of. They talked about nitrogen. I'm there. Nitrogen has no effect on the pond. You know, but okay, that that's not my piece. I need more information.
Right, so there's those meetings. Did you write them down?
Yeah, I wrote them down.
And feel free to call anybody on the air. I mean, she's good, Ashley.
I mean, I think, you know, first look is reducing phosphorus is reducing phosphorus. Um the northern portion of the of the Wakeby side is the uh, that's where the we get the biggest loads.
Yep.
The biggest, largest input. Algo blooms, uh seasonal closures are especially especially for a pond that big and that deep is uh certainly an issue. I don't know, you know. The initial shock, I think, of folks not knowing, like, learning about it late in late in the game. Is uh that's that's valid. So I think, you know, like Dennis, like Mike, need more information, but I would I would say. Reducing phosphorus loads is is good.
There.
So how do you find out about the legal aspect of this? Does it come back to us? Do we, can you go to town council and ask them about this or how's that work?
I think I I I only have my suspicions. You know, we have not gotten access to town council on this. Um.
Can can we, Brian?
I I.
We ask them about this or, I mean, this would be like whether this this was signed off by the zoning board and at some point Mary thinks the planning board or whatever body.
Well, I do know the history of this. That I that I can tell the board now, which is that this is like what we were just looking at now with Osprey Court. This was a cluster subdivision.
Right.
So cluster subdivisions in most situations and in most towns and historically also in Mashpee, Mashpee is not an exception. Uh involve two components, right? The first is a subdivision plan and the second is a special permit from the special permit granting authority. Now, the special permit granting authority, generally speaking, is usually either the zoning board of appeals or the planning board, right? So the this special permits all fall under M G L chapter forty A, section nine, and they don't specify in their Z B A or planning board. They say they use the phrase special permit granting authority because even some towns are so small, the select board is the special permit granting authority, right? They don't have, you know, a separate, they don't have a separate uh Z B A and and sometimes even the select board does a lot of the building commissioners' work. Um but not to go down too much of a rabbit trail, uh historically in Mashpee, um when the cluster subdivision provisions of the bylaw were created. The special permit was originally a Z B A special permit. That changed in the mid to the late eighties to become a planning board special permit. Which makes a lot of sense because um, you know, if the planning board's gonna look at the subdivision.
Which makes a lot of sense because.
Shopping for the applicant for them to also get the special permit from the planning board as well. So this is the subdivision plan that is planning board and the special permit uh is Z B A because at that time, um I believe.
We believe.
Yeah.
Because the minutes that the planning board made this decision, missing. All the other minutes are around that that night, around no minutes.
Yeah, and this is dated.
And I cannot, the town clerk has not been able to find. The decision or the original appeal to the decision. So there's a lot of paperwork missing on this.
Oh, it's forty years ago, right?
Yeah. A lot of town, I don't know, I I don't know if there's a box upstairs with all of this stuff. Um but the stuff that was recorded at the registry of deeds, but we still haven't been able to find the. Have we been able to find the special permit? Special permit?
Yeah, no, the special permit.
Is that the Z B A decision?
That the special permit is from the Z B A. So.
Okay.
The challenge was, the challenge was in finding the original special permit. And the reason is is because we had a special permit that was on remand from the Superior Court, which was an approval. Now, that special permit um uh referenced the remand, but we were having difficulty finding.
Find.
What originally got appealed. No, but then we ended up finding it. It was a denial. So it was a denial. The originals, the Z B A originally denied the special permit. It then got appealed. It went to Superior Court. And then it came back. It got remanded from Superior Court and the Z B A approved it.
And so this this is their signature on this document?
No, no, that's that's, so again, it's two buckets. It's the planning board, subdivision plan, and then the Z B A special permit. And all cluster subdivisions have both a special permit and a subdivision plan if they haven't previously been subdivided. Which they wouldn't be if they're cluster subdivision.
Well.
So.
Let me tell you. So we. So can we find out if we have the right documentation and if there's anything amiss since this plan, they try to make this plan go forward? That we might be involved in in somewhere?
Well, I mean, I think whether or not they can make the plan go forward is wastewater's lane. They have to figure out if they. lane. They have to figure out if they can or can't. And they have to take a position on that first.
Would anybody like to speak on this? You can come right up, but you have to use the mic and introduce yourself.
I'm just listening. Thinking about the practice for state of roads.
Hi.
Rich Reed, 23, Gunter's Lane. I don't even know what I was saying. Sandwich hasn't approved that plan as of last week on Thursday.
You mean the, the proposed plan that they released to the public?
Going down to John Hewer. You know the road, Mike?
Yeah.
How it is? John Hewer's right on the town line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you go down the end, you'll come to the end of Peter's Path.
Yep.
And then that's where they were planning on going in. After they moved it from going down my street and then
Right, that's right.
The cul-de-sac.
Aren't you happy about that though, right?
I'll be hap, well, if, if this project goes through and it goes the way it is, I'd be happier, that's for sure. I'd be happier if it wasn't there because of that space. Space is absolutely beautiful. And it's gonna get destroyed.
Have you walked it?
I have not walked it, but I will.
You can see houses through the trees.
Yeah.
This is not a very extremely wide piece of land. So...
Like I said, they haven't approved it yet.
Richard will bring you through the woods.
Sandwich required to approve this plan?
I don't believe so.
So, so they're, they're going down in that proposed...
If they come through Sandwich...
Right, they'd have to get approval for that.
They have to get, they have to get approval through Sandwich. Absolutely.
I don't know.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I thought you meant for the project, not the...
They've got a few design proposals. And we saw a few of them last week. But there was also two or three missing from that presentation that were in that package that weren't shown. The other one is the changing of the direction of the sand beds. There's some yellow highlighting in certain areas. I don't know what that highlighting means. If they have to change something, there's one where the highlighting is coming up off of the cul-de-sac in, on Gunter's Lane. It's highlighted, circled. I don't know if, if that's a proposed area. They're gonna go up that way if Sandwich Way doesn't work?
So your concern is about the pristine nature of the property?
That's one of my, that's one of my concerns. I've been there since 94.
But what about, what about the improvement to the water in the pond?
I'm gonna tell you, Gunter's Lane does not, does not contribute that amount of product coming out of the phosphate and nitrates into that pond. 4%, 2% will get eaten.
3.5.
2% will get eaten up by the ground and won't go in.
Half of that gets eaten up when it goes into the pond anyways.
It's, it's still, phosphorus is still an issue whether you're contributing or not, right?
And that's why they're using alum.
That's why they're using alum.
That's what they're using alum for.
It's a long story.
And I understand.
It's a long, long story.
And I said on the first meeting and the second meeting, definitely want clean water. And you know what? If I had, I'd rather have a sewer than a septic system, to be honest with you. I really would. But it's gonna take quite a while to get this whole thing cleaned up, that's for sure. It's my understanding.
You should go out with Richard to walk the, walk it because
I'd be happy to.
It is not that wide. Like, on paper, it looks wide.
Yeah.
But when you're in the woods...
But it is 26 acres.
There's only a few paths that you can't see the rooftops around you.
Yeah.
So if those trees are gone, it's a huge...
That's the other, that's the other thing that I have, that I bring up next week, is on that design, they have the little squiggly green lines, which I presume is like shrubbery that they're gonna put
Yeah.
Around the facility.
Yeah.
They have that coming into my property. So I don't know how far they're gonna clear in towards my property. Now, that's, that's a little different. You know, it's, and the facility and that design that goes through Sandwich has a 216 feet from my property line. Before, it was, it was 100 feet. So now they've changed that, okay? I get it. But now I see all this shrubbery they're gonna put in, and it's inside of my property line. So I don't know if they're gonna cut part of my property line into that. I, I really don't know. There hasn't been...
Answer the question.
You know, we talk about transparency. I, I don't know why all the slides weren't shown last week.
Very good.
You know, there's two slides in there that, that were not shown definitely. There might have been a third one.
Oh, you mean in the, in the...
In the packet, in the, in the, in the package on the screen last weekend, last Thursday.
It was missing slides, but now they're in the packet.
Now they're in the packet. So it's, there's, there's a lot of things here that are, you know...
Yeah, I think they freely admitted that they did some things that they wish they could do over.
Okay, that, that's all well and good, but
Yeah, but going forward, it better be good.
As I started building my garage, as I started building my garage
Third time.
And realized I needed a permit, and they came out and said, oh, what are you doing? Gotta stop. First of all, I'm not building a garage, okay? But I have to come here, get a permit, the whole nine yards. I have to, my neighbors know that we're gonna do this? They came out. They came out with, just like we said before, Mike, with the surveyors.
It was wrong.
It was nutty.
This is the third big project that this type of rollout happened. Cell tower.
Oh, yeah.
Right? The cell tower.
Yeah, I was prepared for that.
They go into this...
346-page bylaw on form-based code.
Yeah.
Not a peep to the planning board. And trust me, I'm active. I'm on other committees. Not a peep until we get down to the emergency 11th hour. And nobody has any time to pause and think, is this the right? Because it's all rolling so fast.
Right.
And
And we still...
That was one of my public comments, was this should be put on hold for, for serious community workshops to work this out.
Well, true. And he's, they're doing that now, apparently, whether you admit it.
But not, but it's still on the warrant. It's still on the warrant. And I asked them to not put it on the warrant because of that.
Only thing I can say, the people in Mashpee at town meeting will vote yes or no on this project.
Yeah.
Correct.
If, if we get up and speak against it, we hope they vote against it. The people get up and speak for it, and they're hoping they get far, it's the one who can speak the best on this project, either far or against it. So I say, forget about it. Wait till the town meeting comes and let the people decide.
Yeah.
That's who's gonna be paying for this.
But also, I mean, the point is clear. He's not happy with transparency if they're withholding some information or slides that we wanna share with everybody.
Yeah.
See, that's my point. My point about transparency is, we're sorry we didn't send you a certified letter. None of us has, have received a certified letter on that street about what's gonna happen. Still hasn't come.
I think it's not fully guaranteed.
And they were running around saying 4%, when it really was 3.5.
Yeah.
It was rounded up. It's like, what the heck?
The select board agreed to put it on the town meeting.
Yeah.
So it, no matter what information we get now, it's already on to go into town meeting. They should have been given that information last month or the month before, but...
One of my, Mike, one of my concerns outside of this is the open space. If they do this on this open space, they're very, a lot more vulnerable spaces in Mashpee that are open space, that these are gonna be able to just go in and take whenever they want. It's a problem.
Well, I think they made a strong suggestion that this could or could not be an example of what they could do in different areas.
Right.
Because there's so many restrictions, so...
On other people's backyard open space.
Well, yeah, but maybe, maybe if they're, maybe if they're designed and they put it mostly underground and they repurpose it with, maybe not trees in your backyard, but the proper landscaping and re, reconfiguring pathways, maybe it turns out to be a good thing. I'm not saying it's all, it hasn't all been rosy in the way this has been going forward, but, you know, I think we, there's still room, if you just go to the select board, there's time to ask questions and try to get it out there. And so the people know what they're gonna vote on and the day of that meeting.
That's, that's the reason that we have the four, the other three meetings, which is good. You know, we're all happy with that, you know? So, we'll see. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, well, so Lynn's coming up. So again, the next meeting on this is September 25th, followed by October 2nd and October 16th at 7 o'clock at Mashpee Town Hall.
Which means here. Once again, Lynn Barbie Surf Drive. I do not live up in the area of this. But I have multiple concerns. One of which is that the state defines that parcel of land as prime forest land. I have the printout from the state website of natural resource site evaluation, prime forest land. So even if they put in some bushes, they're cutting down prime forest land. And I think that we, we have to recognize the value of this land that's got trails in it and people have walked through it. I have not because I have a disability for, I can barely walk on flatland, much less in the woods. But so, there are people who don't swim in the pond, but there are people who walk in the forest. And I think we're, to say, oh, we can give up one for the other, I think is really not fair. I do, I swim in the pond and I care about clean water. And I, and I know that we've approved substantial funds for an alum treatment for the pond because that's what's gonna really deal with the phosphorus. And I think, you know, in, maybe in a perfect world with unlimited funds, we would do this. But we've already spent $2.5 million in May to do the design and the preparation for this. And we really haven't seen that at all. We haven't seen the studies about what the topography is and how this is all gonna work. And so why are we rushing into spending 25.9 million to implement it when we haven't really prepared the, the information we need to know if it's really the best place to put it? I think putting it somewhere would be okay, but I think it's really unfair to the people who, who love walking in the woods and particularly those, the people in that neighborhood, that they, they're gonna have, according to the design that they gave out at, last Thursday, the pipe that would bring all of the wastewater into this, this, the system, the pipe comes directly out of the cul-de-sac at Gunter's. That's their design. Which means that it's not just cutting down the trees where they're building those buildings, but they're gonna have to cut down the trees all along that pipeline. And they're gonna have to keep, they can't put a whole lot of growth around it because they gotta be able to maintain the pipeline. And it, and what, what they're saying is that all of the houses on Katuut, all the houses on Pimlico, all the houses to the west of Gunter's, all of those will get tied in and all of that will go up Gunter's Lane into this pipe that goes to the system. So I think people in that neighborhood have a very realistic reservation about this. And particularly when they're living with prime forest land, which they thought was part of the conservation from when they bought the houses. And the, the transparency part is the other thing that bothers me. So we've had three versions of Article 4. The first version, it talked about piping and lift stations and low-pressure sewers and generators and odor controls and electrical and other necessary equipment. And then the next one, but it didn't say anything about borrowing the money. It had 25.9 million, but it didn't say borrowing it. The next one did say borrowing the money, and it took out all of those rather unpleasant details about pipes and odor controls and generators and lift stations and whatever. That was version two. It still didn't say Gunter's Lane, the first one. Second one still didn't say Gunter's Lane. Finally, the one that I believe will go into the warrant, although the most recent one does say borrowing, it does say Gunter's Lane, but it also doesn't talk about the unpleasant stuff about pipes and sewer odor, odor control and all of that. So, and then we have the ballot initiative, which simply says, and I am reading, shall the town of Mashpee be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued to fund the costs of a remote collection, recharge, and treatment facility to help manage both nitrogen and phosphorus in Papanesid Bay and Mashpee Wakeby ponds, including all other costs incidental and related thereto? That's the ballot. People will be voting on this before town meeting because early voting is before town meeting. It doesn't say Gunter's Lane. And it doesn't say really what, what the benefits of this are gonna be. And it doesn't say anything about 2.25.9 million dollars. So, and I've said this to Rodney, I said, you know, the process really is horrible. It really is a cart before the horse, for those who know about that, me. But, but it also is going to really ruin a beautiful piece of land and probably not do that much, not have that much impact on the ponds.
Yeah.
Because the alum was what really was gonna help with the phosphorus. So I, I think, I think it's led to a lot of mistrust among some, certain people in, in the town because they feel like they haven't gotten good information, including me, and I don't even live there. And I don't, I think it's not, if we have an extra $25.9 million, let's put it somewhere where it's going to have a really good impact. They could put it down the street from my house on Red Brook Road. Got a big piece of town land there. And we definitely need sewer-ing down there. So I...
I think you're in a higher priority for sewer-ing.
Yes, and we are, they're in the plan. So I would just say that, you know, I think people are, people aren't getting good information about this. And we know the vast majority of people don't come to town meetings, so...
Well, there are three meetings now coming up in the next few days. I encourage, there are three meetings coming up.
Oh, I know. I, I've been to every meeting.
Yeah, I know. So if you people are concerned, get everybody there and make sure they ask the right questions and make sure that people that are gonna vote.
So that Red, Red Brook area, that's in the secondary
Right.
Priority area.
Right. And, and I've been to the meetings...
Whereas where they're proposing it is in a tertiary.
And I've seen the information. And at the first meeting, there were a lot of questions asked, mostly by the people who live around that area. And, but there were no, there was no comment time. There were questions. There was presentation and questions. And then we ran out of time and five minutes to nine, Rodney said, well, we'll do comments the next time. So that's asking a lot of people to put in some time and energy to know about this. When we know most people don't really have that kind of time and energy. And the people who are the most affected are not the people who swim in the pond, because I do, are the people who are about to lose their backyard. And, and as Mr. Reed showed, on his property lines, there are those squiggly things that say bushes. And that's within, according to the map, their, their, their own property lines. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, we good to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I think we did, thank you too for coming, coming in. All right. So I think we did Bracken Engineering.
We did not.
Oh, sorry.
We have a request for a continuance from Bracken Engineering in your packet.
Okay, got it.
They are specifically
September 11th.
Requesting it to be continued until October 15th.
Okay.
So...
But we don't need to set a time?
Well, they weren't down as a public hearing, so I don't believe we need to do a date and time certain, but...
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just
Just schedule it.
Put this to the October 15th meeting. Because it doesn't need a time. Okay? Sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Vote to send certified signatures of planning board members to Land Court Recorder and Bonstable County Registry of Deeds. I take a motion to do that. Everybody did that?
No, we didn't. We did the 2024 rules and regulations, which when we discovered that made us realize we also need to do the certified signatures.
Yeah, we have to sign.
So, yeah. So Karen and Rob fortunately have signed, but we need everybody else's signatures.
Now, did we take a vote to send them?
Yeah, it can't hurt. I mean, you don't...
Okay, I take a motion?
So be.
Second?
Second.
Will they say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I think because it's on the agenda as a vote, we should take it as a vote, but, you know.
Okay. So I know you all read the regional policy plan?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I know like half of it.
You know, like, stop. You know, like, stop.
It's a-
So here's the paragraph that has the growth policy statement.
This is not what I'm signing.
No, 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 no. This is the next matter. This, this paragraph right here.
I didn't find a lot of major changes to the policy. There were some, but not like, and they even admitted that in a lot of situations. But anyway.
You know, I'm going to take a quick break too.
Maybe I'll, might as well.
Yeah. I know he was very impressed. I wish he was, I don't even know why. He should be on the planning board. He's smart.
Who's that?
Rob, our guy, our alternate.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know why doesn't he run? He comes to almost every meeting.
Come in the winter. He goes to Florida, I think.
Oh, does he?
Yeah, I think that's why he kind of-
Yeah.
You know, he could do it online. You know, when you're in Florida, a couple of times he was online.
Huh. Because he's a smart guy. I guess this is going to Brian, right?
Yeah.
The signatures? I'm running out of time. I just need to be, can, I just need to be, I need to be more informed on the, what this project is going to do for Wakebee Pond.
Yeah.
I understand there's going to be an impact on the nature of the land. I get why people are upset about that, but it's just-
How much is it going to help?
Yeah, how much is it going to help? That's why, I mean, that's, and I, you know, talking to Ashley, she was, she was convinced that this was a major problem. And I know, I know that-
I want to know though-
I know that Mary don't want to talk about other stuff, but I think there was enough.
I want to know if there's going to be enough flow going into that system, if it's going to really work all year.
Yeah, that's right. That's the question.
That's a good question. Oh, now we lost Brian. He was scattering.
They tell you to stay hydrated, but they don't tell you the other side of it.
I know.
Wait till you get older.
All right. So if you look at, and we can start without Brian. All right.
Okay, good.
We look at this growth policy for-
Yes, Barnstable County.
Just the little paragraph.
That's what I knew.
So we have, this, this regional policy plan is 77 pages, okay? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, okay. So the growth policy for Barnstable County. So keeping this in context, that the draft LCP that we sent in didn't abide by this growth policy, okay? Growth should be focused in centers of activity and areas surrounded by adequate infrastructure and guided away from areas that must be protected for ecological, historical and other reasons. Development should be responsive to context, allowing for the restoration, preservation and protection of the Cape's unique and finite resources while promoting economic, environmental and community resilience. So I was wondering if we should make a comment that their growth policy should allow for zero, for a zero-growth community.
What do you mean by that?
Yeah.
Well, this, this growth policy sounds, I think we're going, our LCP is going to get rejected because it doesn't allow for enough growth.
Yeah.
Like, I think it should be okay if you say in your community, we have enough zoning to allow for, for development that, you know, meets our needs.
One of my questions for a long time was, how many-
Let's go down flames.
No, but how, how much housing can Mashpee really support? I mean, have we had a limit now?
So what do you think the obstacles are to that? Is it environmental, clean water, is it traffic? What is?
It's like, it's the structure. There's no room to improve it. You got 28, it's only two lanes. You can't widen it. You got 151 and they widen it a little bit. There's no way to, if you build all the houses, they have a lot more traffic.
No, I, I'm concerned about rights happening in Mashpee Commons. They're moving right there and then, then they're looking at housing across the street. They're looking at a marketplace just down the street from there. Chipotle is going.
Yeah, mhm.
You know, we don't know about the marketplace.
Well, we don't want to talk about that too much because that's going to come back before us.
Okay.
So.
But it's just the whole matter of growth.
Isn't there, isn't there? I number, Mashpee could put 15,000 homes and that's it. No, no more because the water won't support it. The, you know, the traffic won't support it. There's no land-
Sewers won't support it.
There's no land to really put something. You know, we could redo some of the land, but Mashpee don't have a lot of that redo, you know, like buildings and stuff that we can redo, you know?
So when they say adequate infrastructure, they're talking about roadways too?
Yeah, but where do they fix these roadways? They can't widen them.
Well, they could. It just would really- Terrific.
How would they widen 28? You got all historical buildings on it.
You saw when they tried to do that in Falmouth.
Yeah.
There were all signs up in people's yards going, this is how wide Route 28 is going to be. Like it was taking people's whole front yards.
Yeah, I mean.
Um, so I was thinking, well, all right, let me see if this would work with you guys. For the second sentence, where it says in finite, finite resources, I, I'm wondering if we should suggest unique and finite environmental resources while promoting economic and community resilience. Take that word environmental and put it right after finite. Because I think, I think the major limiting factor down here is our environmental quality and natural beauty.
Oh, yeah.
So it would read, this is my suggestion that we sent to them. Development should be responsive to context. I don't understand what that means. Allowing for the restoration, preservation and protection of the Cape's unique and finite environmental resources while promoting economic and community resilience.
Well, that's funny because like Mike said, look at all the development going up near the Carmen. That's not keeping our character. That's going to make it look like a little city now.
Right. And I was thinking of the other thing in the first sentence, guided away from areas that must be protected for, for historical, ecological, historical, I think they should put cultural reasons.
Yeah, that's even better, cultural.
Because, because, I'm just going to say it out loud. Everybody, when they talk about the tribe, they think about it in the past, but it's actually today too. You know what I mean?
Well, funny story. When I first came down here, I saw their sound, Mashpee Wapin. And I thought, here's where I want to move to because they keep all the trees. And I didn't think there'd be, I thought you owned most of the land. I didn't realize at that time. But that's one of the reasons why I moved here.
Yeah.
It says, oh, there's going to be like old Cape Cod, like back in the 50s and 60s.
So you just want to suggest adding cultural, ecological, historical, cultural or other reasons, right?
Yeah.
That's fine.
That would be where you're born.
Because I think that-
Sorry, can you just read?
So, so, because we're supposed to be livable communities. I don't, I don't have a word for that. Maybe it, because we talk about our small-town feel, our small-town culture, you know? But growth should be focused in air, sorry. Growth should be focused in centers of activity and areas supported by adequate infrastructure and guided away from areas that must be protected for ecological, historical, cultural and other reasons.
What, what kind of growth are they, are they talking about?
I don't know.
I think it's growth.
While it all goes-
I mean, you got to take a whole plan.
Residential and commercial.
It's the whole plan.
Yeah. Because-
What, how would you define?
A lot of people.
Just new buildings?
Yeah, it's any development. I mean, it's either residential or commercial growth. I think growth is a broad enough term. It would include both.
So I think we should add cultural because historical puts us in the past where we're living here now, right? And do you want to recommend moving that word environmental to in between finite and resources?
Yeah.
Because it's really the environment, like it's the environment and the natural, natural beauty. If we can protect all of that, then everything else will fall into place. The other thing I wanted to recommend is that they, um, they, they, that any type of activity center is approved locally by the town's planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
But I don't like that.
Oh, they're going to know who wrote that. Okay. And then, because I think we're on this pathway that activity centers will have different standards and different technical bulletins than other places. And that, that increased density should always be accompanied by offset of open space.
Yeah.
Because they talk about increasing density in these areas, but they don't talk about how to mitigate it.
And just for clarity, you say, when you say an offset, you mean an offset-
Provision.
By way of the reservation of open space.
Or the provision. Yeah.
Provision, yeah.
Are you going to write this, these up?
No, you can if you want to.
No, no, no. Okay, all right.
I just wanted to make sure I had it right. I didn't know where you were going with this. Were you going to ask me to, so I just want to make sure I had it right.
And that there should be a high priority on redevelopment?
Yeah.
Over greenfield development? Sound good?
Yep.
So we'll, oh, what else, Michael?
No, just, you know, that, that sounds fine to me. Just send it out when you get it done. We'll, if we have any reservations at that point, which I don't think we will.
Well, let's do the 24th, so I got to go forward with it.
You want to take out historical, Mary?
It is the-
17th.
17th.
Seven days.
No, I want to keep historical in there.
Oh, all right.
But see, in Mashpee, we see that when, that, that we have living history. You know what I mean? Like, we have a, we, we have cultural resources. We don't have, we, we don't have, we have different resources than other communities just because we came from a, a Native American reservation-
A plantation.
You know what I mean? It's-
She's just adding, not subtracting. It's a good thing.
Yeah. I don't want, I want to, because if you don't have the history, you repeat it, you know?
But I think people, historical resources, they think that captures-
All that, yeah.
The Wampanoag tribe, and it doesn't because they're, it's a, they're here now.
And they've got plenty of haircuts.
Very nice essay about that.
Yeah, you know, one, one thing I was just thinking of now too, and I actually mentioned, meant to mention him when I was, and obviously you can't list every important person that was at, at the One Cape Summit, but Michael Bobbitt was at the, at the One Cape Summit and he's the head of the Mass Cultural Arts and Cultural Commission. And he had actually a really interesting point about how art and culture and the performing arts can really drive an economy. And you can reinvent regions through that. Anyway, just this discussion prompted me to think of that. I wanted to mention that Michael Bobbitt was there and also just float that idea out to the planning board as well as the, the importance of arts, arts and culture.
Let's put it in the LCP. We don't have that in the LCP.
Sounds good.
Perfect timing. And I'm sorry, I didn't email you that stuff, but I will. All right. So there's that item. A report on CHER's activity. We had the community preservation open, uh, the community preservation public hearing yesterday, and that was good. Town planners' report.
Uh, yes. So I just wanted to give everybody a quick update on the PENNS working group. We've had approximately three or four meetings and we're getting ready to do another meeting on September 30th. To remind everybody, this is formally called Papaneset Raise and Replace. I think we've done a good job kind of circling-
What does it stand for now?
Pre-existing non-conforming structures.
Oh, thank you.
So I think we've done a good job identifying a lot of key goals. And I think we're kind of honing in on some, some of those key goals to present ideally to an open public forum to have discussion, to make sure that the public is in line with the goals that the working group has been coming up with. I personally have taken the liberty of redlining Article Five of our code, which deals with both raise and replace as well as just pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses, to update it. Because the last time it was adjusted was prior to what's called, called and commonly known as the Bjorkland case, which has kind of revolutionized the way that we think about pre-existing non-conforming structures, particularly when you're dealing with non-conforming lots or undersized lots, which is a big issue in Mashpee. So I did go through that just for that issue. It's not necessarily the goals or the focus of the working group, but it is something that I think that whatever goals the working group comes up with should be used as the baseline for it. I ran it by the building commissioner. He gave a thumbs up to all of it except for one small provision, which he thinks we don't see eye to eye on, but I think we don't see eye to eye on the fact that he thinks we don't see eye to eye on it. If that makes sense? He's, he says he disagrees with me with the inclusion of a small provision. I disagree with him that he disagrees with me. And I'm trying to explain to him, no, look, let's go through examples. I think we're really on the same page here. So we just haven't gotten to the point of actually being on the same page, but I think we will get there.
So who's in the working group? It's Karen?
Yep, Karen, Mike Richardson, Glenn McCarthy, Bob Orsi and Steve Cook. And also I wanted to just let this board know that it looks like Phase Five of the cottages at New Seaberry.
I'm not done with PENNS.
Oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
So, so we had a, we had a working group at the library a year ago, June. Do you think we're going to be able to have a-
I hope so. I hope so soon.
The public?
Yeah, I hope so soon. I'd like to see that be, you know, the product of our next meeting.
Yeah, because usually it's a Thursday night because the library is open till seven.
Okay.
Right? And I have the, I have, I think I still have the list of names of people who came.
Great.
And of course, we, we put the word out. Because there were people from other neighborhoods-
Sure.
That worked as far along as that area that looks like a heavily represented, you know, area in New Seaberry and Papaneset, only Papaneset, right? But there's some other neighborhoods that are experience, experiencing this.
Sure.
So I think one of them was John's Pond, the John's Pond area. Because that housing stock is starting to get older and those lots and those properties that have been, like, owned for years by, by a family, they're, now they're starting to come for sale. And so people are raising and replacing properties, so. Yeah. If we could set a date, a Thursday, that the Concom doesn't meet on.
I will definitely recommend it to the working group. And it is something that we, we do want to do and, and are going to do, but just the question is, how soon?
Yeah. And it was, and we just put the tables, we put the tables in a big, a big square. Yeah, and it was, and we just put the tables, my boy put the tables in a big, a big square, and.
Great.
Alright, cool.
Um, yeah, absolutely, so, um, the cottages at New Seabury, uh, they're looking to do Phase Five, and they're looking to do a subdivision that they're going to call Top Spin Way across from the tennis courts. So this falls under the New Seabury Special Permit, but they still need to do a subdivision, and when I say the New Seabury Special Permit, I mean, mean the one that dates back to the sixties, and has a very long history here. Uh, it's in what's called Section Five of that special permit, so.
Is that special permit, does that need a renewal?
It's supposed to be expiring, yeah.
Should be coming up.
Dave has the date, I don't know the date offhand, but it's probably, I believe in about a year, it's gonna be expired.
Now, I think that special permit was issued by the select board.
Yep.
Uh, if the select board was functioning as the ZBA, but I, it's a ZBA special permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a ZBA special permit.
Somebody said it was gonna come in from the planning board, and I'm like, I don't think so.
Oh, it's not a planning board special permit. No, it's not a planning board special permit.
How many units are they putting in there, do you know?
Um, I believe the subdivision proposal is for five.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're coming up to their ultimate number.
So they, they came to us with draft plans, we went over them, we saw some concerns on the front end, uh, and they said that they were gonna make some adjustments before coming to the planning board.
When the special permit ran out, the select board granted them another twenty-five years.
So I am still familiarizing myself with the long and interesting history there, but I do, I do believe they went before the select board.
They did, yeah.
On an issue at one point in time.
Cause they was fighting.
The original special permit called for a number of renewals in twenty-year increments, but the special permit has a long history that also involves litigation.
Yep.
So.
Holy smokes, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously it has a long history if it dates back to sixty-two, I think it was sixty-two or sixty-four, so, you know, right out of the gates, we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know, like over sixty years, yeah.
So the big lesson to learn is always have phases, right, where.
Well, yeah, it's.
Things can change in your local zoning gets introduced to these old, old, old.
Yeah, well, it's also very unique to see a special permit cover that much land.
Yeah.
You know, for all, that much land to be on.
Excuse me.
So.
Okay.
Certainly don't see that in current, current times. Um, I was just gonna report on One Cape Two, but I did that already, so.
I'm so glad you got to go, did you go one day, or you, you?
No, I, I got shut out on the first day.
Really?
I was a little late to the party, but I, but they got kicked off the waitlist, but then something occurred, anyway.
In correspondence, there's an interesting note about the Cape Cod Bridges, uh, the Mass DOT files the state environmental review documents for the Cape Cod Bridge project, so that was interesting.
Yeah, and one data point that I learned from One Cape is that the Sagamore Bridge project is fully funded, but the Bourne Bridge project is not yet funded, which is.
They tried, our delegation tried. And any other highlights in correspondence, oh, there's, there's the new, um, chapter D. Uh, regu- Cape Cod Commission's Chapter D regulating development agreements. I think that's it, what do you think?
I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, well, uh, did you want to discuss the engineering situation, or wait until next?
So anyways, Ed Pesci can provide us with services for the next thirty to sixty days.
Alright.
So, um, he, he's, uh, gonna help us as much as he can, um, but he's gonna take a break from engineering for a little bit. So, we were hoping to put out a request for bid, or a request for proposal, whatever the procurement officer says, um, and send it out, uh, to at least three engineers, one being the Merrill.
Yeah.
Who came in second.
Yeah.
Um, and then we were thinking of Ty and Bond, and.
I was thinking Weston and Sampson also, but any other?
Does this mean for full-time, somebody else coming in instead of?
Yeah, it's an RFP for new town engineer.
Can't reserve a spot for him going forward, I guess, indefinite leave of absence, he's just gonna do thirty to sixty days?
Right, I mean, I, 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 yeah, we get to pick, we get to pick our board engineer, you know, um, and Ed was a really good fit for us um, and the ZBA, but, um, he just doesn't, is not gonna have the time for us.
Yeah.
So.
It's too bad.
Yeah, um, so we have to move on, I, I did like Merrill, I thought they weren't as big as other places, so I thought we would get a team, and this is just to review it, if I, if I am correct. Review it against our engineering standards, right, um, so that when it comes to us, we're not reviewing, and he's doing the peer review of all the engineering to make sure it, it conforms with our, uh, rules and regs.
Yes, and, and best practices from an engineering standpoint, like he'll look at the gradient, you know, in a subdivision, he'll look at the gradient of the proposed way, he'll look at the drainage, you know, the proposed drainage and that kinda, those kinda things.
I mean, there's a little bit of overlap with zoning, cause some of the zoning requires you to.
As well as plan review.
But, um, you're really in charge with the zoning compliance.
Well, yes, yes, to the extent that, um, it doesn't involve a technical engineering component, yeah.
Yeah.
So will we meet with them again, you're already meeting with them, we'll meet with them again at some point, these candidates?
Oh yeah, so what happened?
We haven't met with any, so we'll certainly bring them before the board.
This is years ago, when we, when Charlie Rowley retired, he was our board engineer, I think he was here longer than anybody else in town, I think he was the town, uh, the, the planning board engineer for over thirty-five years, and so when he retired, we put out a request for proposals, um, so we'll submit that out again. That was, Ed Pesci, we, at that, at that time, it was years ago, Ed Pesci and Merrill Engineering responded, so we should definitely include Merrill in our shortlist. It's open to the public, it's a, any, any engineering company can, can.
Yeah, and if, if the board, I think one important reason to bring it up here is if the board has any sug- or board members have any suggestions, we can also be sure to contact them. Um, I already, uh, did chat briefly at One Cape with some members of Weston and Sampson.
Oh, good.
I already mentioned it to Gabrielle at Ty and Bond, because she was before us for the stormwater regulations, and, you know, Madam Chair brought up Merrill, so we'll be reaching out to them as well, but if any board members have any other suggestions, let's make sure it's on their radar, then interested applicants can come before the board, and the board can
We interview them.
Effectively interview, and then vote.
Rank them and then.
But it is, it is in the town general bylaws that the board can appoint a consulting engineer.
Okeydoke.
So ZBA has to find somebody too, but I didn't wanna do the RFP and combo.
Necessarily have to be a different engineer?
Usually it is.
Oh, really? Cause Ed, Ed was doing both.
I know, usually.
Wait, so what, what was Charlie?
That's why.
Wait, what was Charlie Rowley, was he not doing?
Charlie did, too.
He did some.
Yeah.
He could do all, cause he, people kinda felt that it should be separate.
Really?
But, yeah.
To me, it would make sense to have.
Remember when Ed started working for ZBA, he would, remember he would come and tell us?
Yeah.
I just wanna let you know, is it okay with you if I review stuff for the ZBA, and we were like, fine. But usually it's separate.
See, to me, it would make sense to have one, because there could be overlap with projects, and why have two different engineers look at the same project and get double the bills?
ZBA is supposed to use our town engineer, but we don't have one, or we don't have one that has the capacity.
Well, I think in Ed's contract, that's, he's, even though he's outsourced, his appointment is as town engineer.
That's his our board engineer.
Oh, I, no, I could be wrong, I could be wrong as well.
Well, the point is, we're gonna look for a new engineer.
Yes, we do.
Good.
I do think there was a vote at town meeting to create the position of a town engineer, but it hasn't been funded, so, anyways.
Alright, I got a motion on the board to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Oh, I wanted to mention one more thing.
Oh my god.
Alright, I am, I'm, oh, it's, is it already on, alright, just for public notice, there is an affordable housing lottery at Liberty Green, five-five-six Main Street in Falmouth, Mass. Do, 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 I'm trying to find really, there are, I put out applications in the lobby of, of Mashpee Town Hall if you would like an application. And the number is six-one-seven-seven-eight-two-six-nine-zero-zero, extension one, that's six-one-seven-seven-eight-two-six-nine-zero-zero, extension one, leave a message and, with your name and address, and they will send you an application for affordable housing, that's it.
Madam Chair, what's the deadline for the lottery?
I think it's, um, November seventh.
And also just for the public to know that that information is all up on the Planning Department webpage as well.
Thank you, exciting, alright, goodnight, everybody.
Well done, Brian.
Yeah, and so, I've been leaving applications for affordable housing on Jessica's counter.
Yeah.
Right, she's been putting.